She's recording, I can't.
That's why there's a term, but it could be.
Is that what this is? That's only structural report.
They're all right.
Thanks.
Is golden building systems on the line? You're coming.
One more stuff.
There we go. Rich? Carlos?
Just call.
Hi Carl.
Carl Walters, Jack D. Walters and Associates, hello.
Hey guys.
Hey Rich.
All right, you guys have the floor, you're gonna give us a structural report, right?
Yes.
Do you want a summary of the report? How would you like me to proceed?
Summary of the report Carl would be fantastic.
Okay, so I visited the site and I looked at the buildings and I defined the buildings as building A and building B, building A is the masonry wall building. And building B, I don't know how you define your buildings, it was the one that's tucked back more, it's a wood framed building, so do you understand that terminology?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, the pole barn.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, I looked at those under the proposal that they would be renovated and used as an essential facility for police or fire or emergency use, and what that means to me as a structural engineer is that triggers me into a risk category. So, to you, the building could be business, but if it's used for essential facility, that triggers me to go to a higher risk category. And that triggers the applied loads to increase. And that's the criteria which I included in the report, the the design loads, the building code, all those items is the basis for my analysis. Now to expand on that, the Ohio building code has just been updated and is now 2024 is the current code. And when I dived into that, they have increased the loads on risk category four buildings from the previous addition slightly, so I was not aware of that till I dived into that. And the one that kind of caught me by surprise was the snow loads. Because typically, around here, you design for about twenty pounds of square foot snow load. Because it is, I looked at it. It is category that is now a third.
Kind of breaking up Carl.
Hey Carl, turn your video off, not that we don't like to see your face, but it may free up your.
Square foot, so that's a substantial increase.
Hey Carl.
So. No.
Hey Carl.
Can you go back a little bit Carl?
Okay, did you hear me Rich?
Yes, we can hear you now, you started breaking up about thirty seconds ago.
Right when you said about the 2024 update to the building code and the snow loads. That's where we kind of lost it.
Okay, so if I start breaking up again, just kind of raise your hand because I can see you, do you hear me good now?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
Alright, so 2024 building code. That, when I went into that, I, this is the first time I've gone into it for the essential facility and the loads have increased from the previous building code, so that was a surprise to me. And I did say out on the site that I thought that the masonry building would be okay, but then when I found, discovered disinformation, the roof load, the increased snow load made it so that that existing roof framing is not adequate. And for example, a typical design roof snow load for a typical building is twenty pounds per square foot. But if it's an essential facility, it is now thirty six pounds per square foot. That is a consequence of changing the use to the current code. So moving on with that criteria, building A, that's the masonry building, the roof framing is the weak link, it is would take substantial reinforcement to increase the capacity of that roof framing to support that new snow load. The wall framing is, I consider marginally adequate, meaning you could do minor structural repairs, fix some cracks and defects, correct some opening conditions and it could be adequate, the foundations are adequate. So for building A, the quick summary is, you would essentially have to almost put a new roof framing on it and then it would be adequate. Moving on to building B, it really, to put it simply, doesn't have a chance, it's more of an agricultural type building. It has wall girts and roof pearlins and trusses at six four to four foot on center. And it is just not adequate across the board and I couldn't even propose reinforcement for it. So based on my experience doing this for a long time, I would not recommend either of those buildings to be reinforced for risk category four usage because of a diminished returns for the amount of money you'd have to put into it just for structural reasons and then the end product you would achieve from that, I would believe that in my experience that building new with that amount of money, you'd have much better products.
Hey Carl, question, so when you say essential facility, if building A remained as is and the use, which it wouldn't be police, would it then be categorized as essential because that's, our road department is currently working out of that building?
I don't have a definition in front of me, but I'm pretty sure essential to fill, essential facility defines it as a facility that provides services, health services or emergency services that are considered life safety. And I don't think road work is considered life safety.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, if that, if that were to be used as a garage basically, right? For strictly road department, we don't have any EMS obviously anymore or any kind of life saving stuff. You're strictly talking about road department type stuff in that building. If you had road department offices even in there, that, I don't think that would necessarily convert it to a essential use where you know, maybe that building just stays as is somehow. It sounds like obviously the the pole barn, on rainy scenario, it's just not worth saving.
Yeah, I had an experience in Bexley, no, it's over ten years ago and they made the mistake of just purchasing like a post frame building and then put some fire truck equipment in it and it was a, it was a very extensive reinforcement, cost more than the building. So the post frame ones, yeah, that it doesn't have a chance.
Maybe that's why building this building over here is all basically
The block?
Block, because that's where the fire trucks were.
You think that's why they put the fire truck?
Well, I mean, I had to come in, because I always thought that was always the road building that we're talking about and I always thought the fire trucks were attached to our current building, which is a cinder block building. And the police department's a cinder block building.
Okay. So Carl, based on building A, again, the use, is there anything that you saw that again, if the use as current didn't change, is there anything that would would trigger an increase in any kind of structural whatever on that to, that we need to consider?
Well, you would be, let me ask this question, in this scenario that you're renovating it and it would be the current code, but not essential facility?
Correct.
You would have on a structural standpoint, you would have minor load increase and I feel a hundred percent confident it would be adequate for that. There are some deferred maintenance issues I saw where I would like to see some cracks repaired. There are some linteal conditions that needed some work, painting for maintenance, stuff like that, but I would say I don't know, ten thousand dollars, maybe a little more masonry work to clean up the outside, the integrity of it to make those walls, in my opinion, structurally adequate without any minor defects. Now, architecturally, where I think you might have some issues is the new energy code, which I'm not an architect, this is just me observing it. And you would have some costs there, meet, making it meet the energy requirements. Cause I don't know mechanically, that's something that's, I'm not gonna, that's not my expertise, but just being part of similar projects, if you have vehicles in there, if they are serviced, then it triggers some more expensive ventilation per the current code.
Is that, is that if it's occupied space, meaning offices, things like that? Instead of just vehicle and equipment storage?
I think it's semantics, it's like, you gotta be careful what you say, so if the vehicles are not serviced in there, they were just parked in there and then you would have offices and stuff like that.
Okay.
Carl, what's your definition of service?
That you're technically repairing vehicles in there.
I think, I think we do that.
We do that.
Yeah. So like, I think it's, it needs a system that measures carbon dioxide, automatically exchanges air, so, stuff like that. If you go down that road, probably get a mechanical engineer to do a quick feasibility study for the current code for the proposed use.
Well, this is one more bit of information to put in the hopper to figure out where we go and we're still kind of floundering with that, but this, this helps clarify some some issues with respect to some of the buildings. Two in particular. One's usable, one's probably, one's not, it sounds like, and even the one that's usable might need some more modifications, depending on what's going on inside there, even though the building's structurally sound, I get that.
Any questions?
That's all I got for now. I'm sure we'll think of some other stuff, but you just gotta get better educated on what, what we need and what we can, what we can and can't do, I guess.
You know, and something we can assist with, or I can, is if we want to go to a next step on you and analyzing these buildings and the cost to upgrade them, you know, Carl could do a little bit more engineering work on what would be required, then I could give you some rough estimates. You know. It's one option.
Yeah, that certainly would be. Like I said, I, you know, going back to the Aqua project, when I looked at all the stuff that they had in their garage, so we didn't have, we didn't have any of that really, you know, whether it was, I mean, I can't think of all the examples, but it was just like, this is how you would sort of envision a garage that would have commercial vehicles that need service and, you know, and whether it's cleaning stations to work, you know, and all kinds of other things. Where ours is, ours is basically just storage and vehicles without all this other stuff. Including even like how you would get underneath a vehicle to work on, you know, that's, that was like a big thing that a light kind of went off in my head, the roof is like, we don't have that kind of stuff in our garage. And then I even thought of, I got carbon monoxide on the brain because I'm defending a hotel that had a massive carbon monoxide leak in a in a pool and fourteen people got pretty badly injured because of that and well, again, if you're working in a garage like that, you got vehicles running and it's winter time, you're gonna have carbon monoxide in there, so you gotta have some kind of a carbon monoxide elimination system, some kind of ventilation, right, so never even thought about that till just now.
You Rich, on that proposal you gave, was that included in like your step two after the structural engineering?
Yes, yes, it is. You, really that proposal was like based on you guys making a decision to either renovate the buildings or build new, but I think I could modify it and it won't be very, very much, if anything. To take, you probably more Carl's cost than mine. But to take, take this, you know, renovating, upgrading these existing structures, you know, to the next level just from a structural engineering standpoint. What do, what do you think Carl, how much time or?
Okay, so we're saying building A is an essential facility?
No.
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 No, we're just saying building A is, we want to utilize it as it currently exists. It one of the things that we would have to do to, to basically put ourselves up for success in years to come.
Okay. Well, I, I think the starting point for that is a real clear definition from you guys and what exactly it's used for. Or does my answer kind of dictate what it's used for because it's that whole, if it's used for repairing vehicles, then what does that trigger, or you're just asking just structural?
Just, I mean, you know, again Carl, I think what it is, is what do you have, what would we have to do to this building to extend the life ten, fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty years? You know?
Okay, structural point on exterior.
Structurally Carl, because from a mechanical you know, side, I can take care of that with you know, design build contractors, but really from a structural standpoint.
Okay. That would simply be addressing the masonry walls, meaning fixing the existing cracks and then putting on an exterior coating to protect it from infiltration and creating those cracks in the future, so be routing and tough pointing, it'd be grouting some of the core solid at these linels where I saw a little cracking and distress from just over time, it looks like some openings were infilled and those might need to be reinforced a little, so I don't see that as that much work, probably the most expensive part of that work would be the exterior coating and to put on a good one or just a marginal one on that. So for me, the amount of work would be, I come out, I probably do an elevation of each side, do coded notes of the repairs. So it would not be that much work for me.
Okay. So based on that scenario and use, the roof trusses, roof structure would not need to be reinforced?
No, the roof structure in general looked good, I didn't see any indications of failure, just long term wear, so no, the roof, the roof framing is good. I didn't get up and look at the sheeting and the roofing or any of that, because it really wasn't relevant for what I was doing the first time.
So long, it's a non, it's a non-essential building, right?
Yes, non-essential.
And, and Rich, you could figure out, like, if we had to put a new roof on it, you know, that kind of stuff, that what that, the cost on that would be, and I know we've done some repairs to it, but it probably needs and at that point, you're addressing what Carl was saying, like the, you know, what's the plywood look like underneath the shingles and things like that?
Yes, yeah, for sure, you know, I think those original budgets we gave you, you know, the first one was renovating all the buildings, I mean, I think those included you know, new roofs and then obviously we were updating the exterior
Yeah.
in, in those numbers and as well, so. Yeah, I was just concerned about the structural upgrades, because that was not assumed you know, before.
Like I said, more stuff to kind of put in the hopper for us to consider. Anything else?
I've got nothing, thanks.
All right, we'll get back to you guys, we appreciate it.
Good night.
Thanks.
This is just kind of a weird question, how many square feet is this building right here?
Ninety seven and sixty, something like that.
And what's the police building?
Twenty eight. No, 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 I'm sorry, I haven't, you know what?
I thought this was like three times three, if you include the garages in there?
Yeah, it, it would include the garages, but let me, I'll bring that up, I've got it someplace.
I mean, could you pay all costs and everything, but if you could renovate the current road department building and bring that up to code inside and out. And I'm just like completely changing what we've talked about before, if this building's structurally sound, roof, and it sounds like it is, because it's, it's not pretty, but it's made out of cinder block, could this be the giant police building? And just build like a pound your pole in the back?
Well, I, I still like, you know, salt farm going in and, you know, whether or not building three stays or not, but I, I really like separating, because right now we got this crossover thing going on.
Or, or just tear down the pole barn and that turns up, somehow this building of the pole barn turns into
I think what you could do.
And everything in the back is road department, salt barn and all that.
But I think if you tore down the pole barn, built new, maybe it's a two story, but it's just that, and if, you know, you somehow worked building one into it, but again, knowing that this thing is.
And that would be the only building that would be new and somehow if you can incorporate, you would just upgrade the garage and all that, since it's not essential, and somehow you would make this building and a new building next to it, police and administration and all that kind of stuff.
But I can't figure that out tonight.
We just build the Aqua building and just bring it over here now.
So the building one is four thou, this, this is four thousand seventy five. The road, the existing place is twenty six ninety three. So it's almost.
Hey man, what's the pole barn?
The pole barn is three thousand seventy nine. And then the, the road or the, the what they were saying, building A is six thousand.
But if you double the size of this building, you'd have plenty of room for police and administration and all that.
Of this building.
Yeah. And somehow try to, yeah, obviously clean up the outside and stuff, but if it was all contiguous building, and this building somehow connected to, and then maybe you could put your gas and wrap it back and, you know, and buy your soft bar and the road department, I has got more room over there and that's like, you can't do it all, you know, but it just, it kind of changes how you think about things a little bit. Or just white of ash, start all over, but you guys gotta know what all these things cost. Get that police letter passed. Zoning.
How you doing, T? Wonderful, I learned a lot tonight, thank you. Old business, we have the castle property Riverside Drive has been cleaned up and is looking nice and spiffy and we got, we got a receipt for the work that was done on that, did get the the certified mail came back, returned to sender, but we also sent regular mail back. We do have service on the owners and we have a clean clean property now, the other nuisance resolution was on Oak Horn and the lady has her daughter with her now and they hired a crew and they've taken care of about ninety percent of the backyard. We ended up putting it in the bags for our crews to pick up, if the, if the, it occurred. However, her vehicle in her driveway is now expired, so I called her today about that to let her know that her vehicle, her vehicle is expired and out of compliance. So those are, those are two of the old businesses. New business, as you guys know, Courtyards on Riverside have hired a contractor to put in a fence where they thought it should have been put by Epcun at the time and that process requires a modification of the development plan, which they have filed. The, the application for the modification, I have all of the documents that I believe that we need. We have plot plank, two plot plans showing the location of the, where the fence is gonna go. We have easements from each of the six homeowners that it's gonna cross, we have the materials that it's gonna be made of and video evidence of what it's gonna look like, which is very similar to the fence that was put together by Epcun. And we have a public notice that's going in the paper tomorrow that the hearing will be at our next meeting on the eighteenth. And so on the eighteenth, HOA president will come to present their application for modification and approval. So there's that.
So for this, once these folks go into the castle property and do their thing, will you be ready for me to turn this into the accounting, the reimbursement to the assessment?
Yeah, I got the invoice today.
Okay.
So I'll send it to you, but everything else is in order, in order to do that.
Okay.
Anything else on zoning?
There are, you know, there are a couple of problematic files that, that I don't have on the agenda, but Beth and and counsel and I are gonna get together and work on those. Including the fence, fence issue.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Road departments.
Please, you're getting picked up.
Tell them about it right now, but I see, I saw our truck lined up this morning, ready to go at eight o'clock.
So these, the leaves on the circle on the green are problematic, they're gold lined and will everything?
Angie, we're now gonna go to fire and EMS. Anything on the fire EMS, you stopped here, you didn't call me of anything urgent, anything on the police department, we didn't know about?
I'll go back to something for just one second.
Yes.
Sorry, any, the conversation we had about the patio at Brookside, you mind sending me an email?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Oh, that, that brings me, the castle property, were you able to get ahold of the owner?
Nope.
Are they gonna build another castle?
The gentleman that was my primary contact, he's, I think he's finally completely stepped away, he's been gone for parts of time.
I liked the old house better. It was fine.
Madam Administrator.
One sixty one quarter study, wanted to discuss that.
I think we're having to get back together again, so more to come.
Uh, there's, you and your packet for the Franklin County, Franklin Suicide Prevention Hall listen, I'm trying to, I'm like a. No, that's fine, it's just we had conversations with one of the gals over there looking to see. More of an educational piece and, and who to include, we were thinking the civics, the school township. To be able to push things out to our residents, but the MOU that she sent as a template is quite brief, I think. It's just another of the trustees deciding how far they'd like to take this.
I'm getting there, I'm sorry. So as Beth had indicated. We have been having conversations for some time with civic associations about providing some type of. Suicide prevention, education and outreach. In partnership with the civic associations and, and like schools. This is just, this is something that was sent to our attorneys. To, to be, to look at. And the, the terms of this are pretty basic. In regards to the MOU portion of it. And. We would hope that the board would. Find us be worthy of something that we would offer up to our residents and the community as a whole. Just wanted to find out if you've had any questions. Regarding this before we kind of move forward on something more specific. In regards to. What this would ultimately cost and so forth, but we'll, we'll get to that. But just need to know whether. Concept of the MOU is acceptable.
It's pretty basic and it's not, you know, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, like, yeah, I imagine it's.
We'll have a, at the next board meeting, we'll have a, a final proposal for you all.
Alrighty, is there anything more currently on the traffic calming?
I know that I had a couple items that I have not gotten to, and I apologize to the board. One had to do with getting a historical data from the county engineer as well as commitment to have a traffic count done over there again. So I have a call into Brad. Asking him, we've had a few messages this time, while he remains county engineer, he's been able to provide us with that traffic cap study. As well as any relative data that they have.
I think we may, I don't, I'm not, we asked the old data. Last time to take a look, I'll take a look too. But my understanding was after that meeting over at Riverside was that the county was gonna go in, not really say what time, date, such and such, and just get in there and do it.
Right, we do not want to know the date and time.
Yeah, I thought they, they had already had that on their schedule, so.
Did they?
I don't know, but you might want to ask him, they may have already done it by now. Okay, the three sixty performance reviews, I saw that Luke sent them out, I think these changed up a little bit while I was on vacation, so. A couple people have asked, what is the deadline to complete the three sixty reviews?
Two weeks, I mean, I think it's November first, you know, whatever that.
Two weeks beyond that?
Yeah.
They are letting everyone know, and the other thing, I'm.
But, but we're, it's my understanding, we're not. We're not reviewing, all we are doing is we're sort of the arbiter of like the information, you know? So, and then we can sit down and talk to each one of the, you know, once we get the feedback. We can kind of look at it and then distill it.
Why don't we just begin on Friday the fifteenth?
Fifteen, okay, then I just have one question, because this is, again, kind of different than where it was when I left. So I report to the three of you. So, so they're saying you're not gonna be doing my review. Then, because I mean, the way it had originally been set up is like I would do chief's. His group would, you know, what their input in, I would do Ions, his group would do their input. You know, kind of down that line, so I just need to know. Or just think about it and let me know how it's gonna go.
Right, I thought that we were gonna get the comments back, we were gonna have, as a board, look at them, I know that we wanted to kind of. Look at everything that was submitted.
Well, I think that's more asking, like, who, who actually is gonna be reviewing, who, right?
So, my.
Well, I, I mean, I get that I'd be due partly because of how the chain of command is, so to speak. But I'm also the only, I'm the one here, but I'm. You know, I'm kind of like Steve and I am spa, so that makes sense.
Right, so they'll.
I report to the three of you.
But they'll review you.
Yes, I get that, but yeah.
Like Luke and whoever, you know, it's kind of an open, it's kind of an open. Thing to review, and then what we're gonna do is take those comments and as the board will sit down, we'll kind of go through them, both yours, Steve and the Ions. Kind of, you know, and three sixty reviews are, you know, a lot of it is, is just getting the high points out, so we can have a constructive conversation to go through, like. My, like, when my staff does a three sixty and everybody does me, I mean, I find it really, really good, because there's a lot of things that they point out that I'm doing, that I'm like. You know, I totally wasn't aware that I was doing. And, you know, it's like, a lot of times, it's like when you're reviewing down. Yeah, there's a lot of things, like, you know, when you point the finger, you got to point back for it, and this last one I got.
Yeah.
I had a really good stuff.
Three sixty review, it was just, it was kind of.
But I know your email, Beth, also said, you know, do I review, and personally, I, I think you analyze yourself. Because what I was doing is there were some things that I was pointing out that were consistent with what the staff was telling me that I, you know, that I needed to. To look at and, and that sort of thing, so it's good to know the things that you're doing, that you are aware.
Yeah.
And then it just kind of helps that, so I find it really helpful to do self review using the same questions.
Okay, but that's just for my personal expectations, and you guys aren't gonna review me just the staff that has reviewed me. And then you were, you had mentioned about how your staff reviews you as their boss or whatever. So that was the original intent, I thought, was to also send it out to everybody. For the elected officials as well, so I.
If you want us to review, if you want us to review you, I mean, that's fine, I just don't.
No, 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 I, that's fine, it's whatever you guys choose.
Do you want to be reviewed?
I do, I, I personally do.
And I told Michelle, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear this, so I had to tell Michelle this, I said, I think that the board needs to be reviewed as well.
Oh, absolutely.
And I said, she said, well, I don't get to review my CEO, and I said, well. Do you think that your CEO does everything right, and is there times that you would like to actually have a conversation with him? And she said, well, absolutely, I said, that's my point.
But I think, I think what we should do is let's not, let's not muck up, like.
Separate this.
Yeah, so we'll do this first, and then we're, and then it would be strictly the trust.
Okay, and that's why all I'm asking for is clarification, because the way I thought it was gonna go. I laid on a beach for a few days and changed up a little bit, so. And it wasn't a bad beach, it was quite a nice beach, so, and a little bit, then we'll go ahead, I'll just let everybody know that, yes, eventually.
The board will.
The board will be getting reviews, because that was just also a question that came up, so, okay, perfect. Let's see, we got the structural report done. Did I skip something? The structural report, I added the VIP accounting program on here. I had talked to Chuck when I first got back, and then I know that you guys had also had a conversation while I was away. But I'm meeting is set up for, I get my understanding is Chuck and Michelle are gonna be on it. My question is, am I supposed to be on it, or is it just you guys?
Yeah, you're supposed to be on it, yeah.
To kind of touch base with them, one of the ladies, when the request was sent out, did ask, you know, called up and said, well. We know this has been on hold, they just left it on hold. But if you might, you probably noticed, one of the things I talked to Chuck about is me. Needing the time to sit down and just sit down and do it, so I sent out. I have Faith in here now, she started last Monday, I've got to say, it's been off to a great start so far, like, she did. All of the stuff for tonight with very little. Direction from me, and so I've already started passing a lot off onto her. So I blocked off Friday through next Friday, where that's all I'm gonna do, I learned how to do not disturb, do not disturb on my phone.
But Beth, let me ask you a question, so instead of backfilling, like, I, to me, I think what's really important is just making sure that we have. Like, the twenty twenty five stuff, like, in, right, and we'll know tomorrow night, like, the stuff that we were filling. But it's like, what if we just focused in on getting that set up and then backfill all of the past information, because really. What it does is it just comes down to. You know, what are, what's our rollover? And what are gonna be all the things, so it doesn't put the pressure on you to like, oh, I gotta bring in all this information, but just focus in on getting twenty twenty five set up, and then. Then we got a lot of time to back.
But I, I'd asked them about that.
Yeah.
A couple different times, and when the gal, when she saw the invite coming, or the request for meeting coming from they. She called me up and she said, they just do not like doing that, because when they're trying to go back to an old program. It creates a lot of headaches, and there's a lot of errors, it takes more money to fix the errors. So you and Michelle can have your conversations and then just tell me what we, what I need to do, but that was something that they highly, highly, highly recommended, did not happen.
I mean, whatever, I mean, I, I'm willing to, you know, however I can help, you know, if it's data entry, if it's that sort of thing, I mean, let us know, I mean, I'm, I'm more happy to.
I get it, and I'm not trying to just hold on to this tight, and I think sometimes that's the, I. Where the thinking is going, is just that the UAN program is not a pleasant program, it's never been a pleasant program, and it's. Very, very antiquated at this, I had married guys who knew the program, now I'm the only one here that has any clue how to operate it.
Right.
It's not like a Quicken program, it's not like your regular checkbook programs, it's. Done all these different pieces, you have to do this before you can do that, and then if this isn't. Off kilter here, then you gotta go backtrack and do something else. But they'll have that conversation, but I do, I'm gonna put this on here, I'm gonna keep it on here. But just know that I am, now that I've got some help on here after a little over a year. And I think she's gonna be very, very good at just being able to take things and run. But I, I'm just gonna be blocking things off.
Yeah, I think you should, yeah.
So I can get it done.
Do it.
And that's all I gotta say about that, just like a forest, don't want to say.
Private retreat.
Private. I wouldn't call it a retreat, but, okay. All right, other than that. Just, this is not gonna happen straight away, but. I have chief, me, Mike, and I and how we search some payroll programs. And timekeeping pieces, that's something that's gonna have to change. I have got an email from, it was in Mifflin Township. They had moved to the, the program, the company we use now. And they're experiencing all the same issues, so they're kind of going through that process of where do we go, what do we do? And so my hope is to kind of team up with her. And, and maybe kind of work through this together.
Anything else under the motion to approve payroll in this person's, on your official officer, now I'll make that motion.
I'll second, do we have to prove these?
No, I just need to know if you're okay with that.
All right.
Yeah, those were approved when you guys did the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve payroll in this person.
Second, yes.
Yes. Motion adjourned.
I'll make the motion.
Second vote.
Yes.
Yes. We're off the record, you guys got a couple.
No, 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 wait a second, wait a second.